Brooklyn Board of Education. We've taken role and we have all board members present. So we have a quorum. And then we proceed to the approval of the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
We have a-
I second that.
Amendment. Dr. Binkley?
I, in our discussion of that, I would like to add to the agenda under Point C, Other Communication Discussion Items, to add 7.30, Notification to Review Policy IIIA, Instructional Material Selection, and also to add 7.31, Notification to Review Policy KLB, Public Complaints About the Curriculum or Instructional Materials. The reason behind this is that as some of you are here tonight, we weren't able to get a first reading of the library material selections done because these two policies have a discrepancy with the library selection policy. So before we can move forward with that, we need to also work on these two policies and therefore we need to give notification that we'll be working on them.
Okay, and then Kelly, you second that?
I just did the approval of the agenda, so I made that motion.
Yeah, she, I took her motion to approve amendment.
Yep.
Amendment.
Yes.
And then we're back to you as amended approval.
Teresa, did you just want to explain kind of, because some, a lot of people haven't been here before, maybe our policy notification, first reading, second reading, and what that all, would you mind, sorry?
Sure, no, I can do that. So I guess for those of you who, we don't usually have this many people here, so for those of you who are here, just so you know, we have a policy committee which is two board members, and that is Deb, Deb Bates, and I. We meet with Dr. Schultz and we go over the policies that we're reviewing. Many of them were adopted in 2013, and because of that, they're outdated, or they, there's laws that have changed, or situations such as this one arise and we go to look to the policies to guide us. We found these discrepancies and that's why we need to do this. So the first step of the process is to give notification that we will be reviewing a policy. And at the following meeting, we should have the first draft and the first reading, and the following meeting after that, we have the second reading and adoption. Now, it doesn't always go that way. Tonight, we have two policies that are finally to the second reading and adoption that were notified last September. So there are things that come up, and there are issues that come up that we have to resolve and people we need to contact. So it's not unusual that a policy won't go in that exact order every time. In any case, we always ask for your patience as we read through these policies and try to make sure that they are written in a way that will guide us in situations that arise.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay, so we have a motion as, with an amendment to the agenda, to approve the agenda as presented, in a second, and with that, we'll take a vote. Okay, motion prevailed. Okay, our next item in business is a reading of the school board mission statement. "The Brooklyn School Board prepares all learners to be confident, engaged citizens empowered to impact the ever-changing and interconnected world." Our next item is Pledge of Allegiance, but before that, I just want to acknowledge that today is a, is a day in our, in our history, 9/11, 22 years ago. I think it's appropriate that we recognize that as we prepare to say the Pledge of Allegiance. So thank you for all of your attendance tonight and for acknowledging this important day in our history. With that, we'll stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we just want to remind that doorway needs to be kind of kept open. Not more than kind of, but so if you could just-
Would you like a chair?
Yep, there's chairs, and that's the option.
Well, thank you. Okay, Dr. Schultz, I'm asking you to review if we have any conflicts of interest to present?
No.
Okay. See none, having no conflict of interest, we do not need a motion for waivers, and we'll move on to Item 6, A Presentation Camelot Elementary School.
It's good.
Okay.
We can snuggle this.
That's right.
Okay.
Just six inches.
I give them some space.
Just open it to unplug it.
Okay, and for the, for the benefit of the audience, please, there we are.
Well, good evening. My name is Cameron Vox. I'm the principal of Camelot, and I'll let my two ladies with me introduce themselves.
I'm Lexi Sealy. I'm a school counselor at Camelot as well.
I'm Megan Madsen, and I'm an ACES instructor.
Thank you.
All right, we'll pull up presentation. So last school year, we spent a lot of time, or you spent a lot of time, reading about our comprehensive needs assessment that our school was going through. And so in May, we kind of had to push back being able to present to you all our process, our data, and our potential solutions. So I thought we might as well kick off this school year letting you know what those changes are. And the committee on this, for Camelot, kind of our timeline, we identified a school-level team, and it was really invaluable to us that we invited all entities at our building. So we had encore represented, both 4th and 5th grade represented, as well as administration, counseling staff. There was eight of us that went a couple different times, working with the Department of Ed, doing the comprehensive needs assessment. Now typically, the comprehensive needs assessment is a process that is asked of schools to be done if they are on school improvement. We are one of the schools that have not been, and so we took this as an opportunity to grow. And in the beginning, it was like, we were trying to figure out why, and we definitely found out why this process is so valuable for our school and for our district to really make plans forward. And so you see our timeline in front of you, that we developed that team and then started to have a shared understanding. We collected data. Darcy Vincent was on that team. She is a very data-driven math teacher in her building, and she dug deep into our data to share some results with us, as well as trying to figure out some outcomes so that we could synthesize and make true change, which a lot of change did occur into this upcoming, or this current school year that we're in now. And so just wanting to communicate, since things do look different in our building, what changes we made. And so first off, we have to use our data to drive all of our decisions. If we want to show academic success for our learners, we had to take the data that we have to start making value change. So we took surveys from the staff, we took surveys from the students, we used our assessment data from the state, our NWE data, as it says up there, and we went through template after template that looks like this. So there are four main areas. So we use both qualitative and quantitative data to review it. Our quantitative, or sorry, yes, our quantitative data was very numbers-driven, of course, with our state data scores over the last several years. We did have those years that aren't represented because of COVID, and the last year wasn't in there because that's not data that we were allowed to use at that point of the school year. So we used that demographic data, looking at attendance, looking at our ELA, our science, and our math scores. We also used our NWEA data. Then we started using those surveys and the communication opportunities within our staff to look at those four pillars that you see up there. So we looked at effective leadership, we looked at our curriculum and instruction, our talent development of our teachers, and the way that we develop and provide professionalism opportunities. And then we looked at our family school, school culture, and climate components. And that's really where you've heard more with our REM colloquium, in really driving hard, working with the Family Engagement Center. Kelly came to the school this last week and took part in that. I know many of you have had the opportunity at a couple different schools to take part in that. One thing that we did kind of hold on through this process was diving deep into the effective leadership. Since I was in month two of it, we wanted to make sure that we, our big focus ended up being on curriculum, the team development, and then the family component, and then we'll definitely follow suit with Looking at Me this year, of course, as always. Right? Yeah. So what came out of those needs were, as you see above. So in each of those four pillars, we came up with some emerging needs, and it shifted a little bit with our shift in superintendent, as well as just where our district is going. You'll see up there that we have PBIS, PCBE, and culture. We definitely still want to work on the PBIS and the culture in me communicating those priorities out, but we're going to focus on those best practices rather than those specific labels of that PCBE.
Can you just tell us what those acronyms mean?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, I have to make sure I'm with everything.
Yes, for everyone, yes.
The PBIS is those Positive Behavior Intervention Strategies and Systems that we are using within our district. The PCBE stands for Personalized Competency-Based Education, and then culture, just the environment that we have in our school. We definitely want to focus on using our data in our PLCs, which is our professional learning community. So when we go on those Wednesday times, when those learners are getting out at 2:22, what is our focus and what does our agendas look like so that we're really looking at driving student instruction based on our data? The curriculum, we really wanted to have common language for our best practices, making sure that we're using our time wisely, and then that vertical and horizontal alignment, which is conversations that you're seeing district-wide to help us be more comprehensive. Professional Development Plan for our staff, so we've been working with Mrs. Stadler as our K-5 Curriculum Director, and then having that plan that includes those student learning goals. As always, our learner safety is a huge priority. We made some positive changes in our school this summer, adding camera systems, as well as adding our buzzer system when you come into our building now. And then our staff has been also doing the DISC assessment with the Family Engagement Center, and then we're working on planning that Family Engagement Night that bring our families in. Any questions on those needs? Oh, DISC. Now you're gonna-
The questions are from us.
So it is a leadership opportunity, so it breaks down the different types of leaders you are, oh, on the spot.
And that's okay. The questions come from us. You don't need to worry about answering public questions.
Thank you, Kelly. All right, so in the end, we have to come up with an action plan, and we wonder why the pillars finish the way they do. And so we come up with some if-then statements to be able to define the problem. So when we were looking at defining our curriculum and instruction, our current structure of our day was prohibiting us from meeting instructional goals in our core content. So when we are looking at our scores from our reading, and our math, and our science, and they are lower than we hope for, why? What are we doing that is helping to make greater gains than not? And so we looked into creating a different schedule this year, and I will talk about that a little bit later. So we have slowly grown away from that intermediate school model towards more of a middle school-type model, or we had. We've made change in our schedule, and I'll show that ahead. Then, and had a full-on action plan that helped determine who was participating in it, when those implementations were happening, to drive that change. The second defining problem that we had was that we have not been presented with clear and concise definitions of best practices at our intermediate level, so we're doing more professional development so that our staff is confident in the vocabulary that we're using, as well as communicating that out with our families. So our solution, some of the things that we changed here is we created teams. So in the past, we had teams that were three teachers to a team, two teachers to a team, six teachers to a team, five teachers to a team. It very much ranged. Now we have teams of three, so we have three teams of three and a team of two in each grade level for the 11 sections that we have. And then we created a new schedule that focuses on those instructional minutes. So we have increased our math, our reading, and our science core content times. We have a professional development plan that we created as a committee, working through those times. And then we're also looking at using our invigils curriculum to focus on our math interventions because math is one of our lowest areas at Camelot. And so we have our new teaming structure. We really found that we wanted to focus on building relationships because we all know that the social-emotional side of things is a huge driver of academic success as well. And then it created less transition. So if I hadn't, last year, my daughter was on a team of five teachers that she rotated through. And so she created great relationships with teachers, but having less teachers sometimes can provide for different relationships. And so we have a new schedule focused on that. In that schedule revamp, this is an example of two of our 5th grade teams. This schedule provided for a lot more content time. So in, previously, we were doing math 45 minutes, four days a week. Now we're doing it four days a week for an hour. So we increased an hour a week. Same thing happened with reading and science. We increased those by an hour a week. And our language content is embedded into those areas, but also now at three days a week at an hour. Social studies, three days a week at 45 minutes. And the tech is once a week. This was something that was hard for our building because tech has been a core content for, since it's opened. We saw lots of change in the fact that we have a learning management system in Canvas, as well as we are one-to-one school. And so we talked about how we can embed this, these content area, this content into all contents. Now, I will say that I am still going to try to find a way to present that we need a technology encore as well in the future, as our K-3 and 6 and up have that, to be able to have that. But right now, my content teachers are carrying that course as well. And you'll also see we have a 20-minute building-wide intervention plan, or time, and our goal is to start that by quarter two. But right now, the shift, teachers went from teaching two core subjects to four core subjects, and so we're just trying to get ourselves into the routine. And then we plan to start an intervention block, which leads to, we are going to use those diagnostic assessments with IXL, as well as invigils, and then recheck those kids. We are going to start with a math focus, as that is our lowest area, with an opportunity to do reading if we feel necessary, which always, right? Always. And so we're going to have to watch that as we go. That's not a time that we've had at Camelot before, so something that we're very excited to start by the second quarter. We are still, we wanted to share, we are doing our habits of mind. We did have lined up in May some kiddos to come in and do an activity with you. 13 days in didn't give me quite the time, not gonna lie. However, if I would see you doing the cup challenge right now, or Pringles, it would be probably entertaining as it is when you go into those classrooms and watch their perseverance. So we break it down a little differently than our K-3s do. They do one a week typically. We do four a quarter for the 16 habits. And then we focus those with our Bobcat Bees that align with our Positive Behavior Intervention supports. I really took the mic from my team of talking here. So I believe, at this point, it's been a lot of change for our building, but a lot of really intentional change based on data, which I think is exciting. And we often have to tell ourselves that change is hard, but we're at the beginning of something really great to help drive some academic success. We are here to open questions to you all.
Any questions or comments from board members?
Just if you could quickly, Kami, let us know the difference between the intermediate model and the middle school model. Is there any one or two points that you could just let us know the difference there?
You know, when we started looking into it, you have the traditional elementary model where you are with one self-contained teacher over the course of the day. So most students would be assigned to one homeroom teacher, and they would have all content areas with that teacher. As we got older, then we were transitioning, as our kids transitioned into our building, we were, we had divided the contents up, and we had math, reading, science, social studies, and tech. And so then they were rotating between five teachers. And that's a really big jump to go from one to two teachers, all of a sudden, to three to six, depending on the team you were on. And then you go into middle school, and those teams are at five, and a team of two. And so we tried to look at how we can better transition these kids into the scaffold for greater academic success. So we look at going from one teacher to six teachers. That's a really big jump to expect them to be mature enough to just take it on. And so when we look at intermediate, we look at that scaffolding process and working them up. So we look at those teams of three now, really go from one to three to five, and it's just a more natural scaffold for our learners. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I would just say, from the teacher's perspective, I would like to hear how you're feeling. I know it's only 13 days, but how are you feeling about this new model and how it's working for you at, at Camelot?
And it's kind of different because, so my role as a school counselor, I don't have that. And then Megan Madsen is now doing our ACES classes, so I don't know if you can speak to that, or... I definitely think that the anxiety that some of our kids had in the transition coming from the Hill Crest Elementary, Dakota Prairie, to Camelot, that that has decreased. Haven't seen as many students in my office, you know, with that. So I think that we're doing good things, and I think we're gonna see the results. I mean, already, I think, day 13, I would say that yes, it's been a positive shift. So.
I was just gonna comment that, oh, sorry, go ahead, Megan. I definitely noticed my children coming home with the habits of mind. So those are something I think that, just so you know, is really transferring home, which is great. So, "Are you persisting, Mom?" And, "I noticed I'm not controlling my impulsivity." And so those words are really, it's a really cool thing to see, and helping at our house. And I even took and just hung it up for us, and so being able to reinforce some of those habits of mind at home are really positive things. So thank you for, thank you for including that. I think it's really important.
And just thank you for coming too. We really, this is our favorite part, is always hearing what's going on at the schools, because that just makes us so proud of the system that we work for, so thank you to all of you.
Extra people to come support us at any time.
There's really cool stuff going on at Camelot.
I would say, you know, in general, we're seeing really positive things with our kids with this change. It's been a really good start to our school year. I really have seen that. Is the anxiety from the teachers a little bit higher because their load changed immensely? Yes. So we're still looking at that schedule. I'm always going to be reflective and flexible with trying to find ways that we are building them up so that we can build the kids up, because it has to be a partnership and universal. So, yep.
They still have a homeroom teacher though, right? So that, that's a person, I mean, I always feel like that's the go-to person, so they still do have that.
Yes. They went from seeing their homeroom teacher for their main content area to now having them for four classes a day. So they've really got that one person, for sure, and then they've got others to connect with, which we felt was super important.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kami.
Hello. I, I was just gonna say, I don't like microphones. I was just gonna say that I think too, from the teaching standpoint too, going from being in the classroom last year to being in this role, that's something that we, the three of us as a team, are kind of looking at. So we've looked at the, what we can do for the learners, and we've worked really, really hard on that, and so now we're kind of taking a look, okay, this is what we're doing, now what can we do for our staff as well? So to kind of answer your question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next, thank you again. Our next agenda items are where the board has committees, and we, these committees, if they have something to report to the full board, it's done in the setting, and so we'll continue with board communications. We'll start with Performance Oversight Committee, if we have, and we have two persons on each-
Terry and I came into the office on Friday and worked through some of our bills, kind of the oversight of the process, and we got through quite a few months, so we just have a little bit left, and then we should be through in time for the audit so that they know that the board has had some oversight of the budgeting process and the bills that are paid by our district.
Okay.
So I'm on policy committee oversight now, after the audit. Is that when I'd start? Okay, very good, thank you.
Facilities and Construction.
Sure.
Kelly?
Yeah. I have a little update for facilities and construction. So basically, construction operations right now have been updated to limit the impact on the school operations and the logistics now that school is in session. Our Houseman, Clark Drew, team did participate in helping at the crosswalks on drop-off and pickup for the first three days of school, and so really thankful for their team for being out there. They said that it was awesome for their team to do it too. They just had a great time interacting with some of the, the kids on their way to school. The structure is progressing, that'll probably, the structural part will probably wind down towards the end of November. So the envelope, exterior walls, windows, roof, that's kicked off at each of the sites happening. Roofing has begun and will continue. The exterior sheeting is being installed now, and then the bricks and windows will be later this month. And then they're also working on, on all that infrastructure, so the gas-water storms were over the next two months as well. So continuing with student and staff safety as their top priority, but we've just been really impressed with the schedule and timing and everything else, so.
And maybe in October or November, we can have a formal board agenda item with Pierce here to give an overview of where we're at, which would be in more detail and probably further along in the whole process, and be a good point in time.
They're working really hard to just make sure everything gets enclosed before the snow flies, and so we can stay on schedule. So they are, they're there a lot, and they're, you see them there a lot, but they've been doing a great job.
Okay. Teresa, Policy and Governance, we have a little expanded area here from your amended motion, amended agenda.
Yeah, I'll just mention a few more things, and Deb or Dr. Schultz, jump in if you have something else. We had, so when we started looking at the policy for the selection of library materials, that includes a reconsideration of materials that are in there. And the policy that it tells you to go to for complaints or grievances about it, has a form listed that is non-existent in our policies. It's an error. And like I said, these policies were written in 2013 and an oversight, so that form was not able to be found. So the reconsideration form that was used was one from Curriculum and Instruction, which is the other policy I mentioned that we now need to notify. And so the process that started is a little bit different than what policy really says, but as a policy committee, we've, we're asking our fellow board members to first of all just let the, the formal reconsiderations that have come in to follow the process that's been started to its completion. And then, secondly, we're working on getting all those policies to be clarified and to give better guidance for the reconsiderations. And then, thirdly, any new reconsiderations, we will need to put on hold because it doesn't, we can't start them without these policies in line with each other. Dr. Schultz sent out an email today explaining that to all parents. And so in the meantime, we do have a form that we have added this fall, as when school started, for any parent to fill out if they want to limit the materials that their student can check out in the libraries. And as of today, I had asked to get numbers of how many of those forms have been turned in to the principals, and none of those forms have been filled out. But they are there if a parent would want to limit what their child can check out from the library. So that's where a policy committee is. Anything to add, Deb?
Thing I would add is that, you know, I don't want you to get the impression that we haven't been working on policy all year. We work on it every month, and we have been going through, we have a lot of policies, if you looked at the policy handbook. So I've been on the board for five years. Every year, we're going, every month, going- Every year we're going, every month going through policies. This one, because there's a current interest in this area, we expedited that process because we know it's something that's really important and that people are thinking about right now. But otherwise, we're just diligently going through. For some reason, 2013, they had all the policies reviewed. And so then nothing much happened for a few years. And so that's why it's taking us so much time to go through them. And then as Teresa said, a new legislation is passed. We've got to go back and review those policies because it may make a difference in an existing policy. So just wanted to know that we're continuing to work on these. It's not something that we've ignored. It just wasn't in the order that we were going through, but because people are interested, we're really looking at that right now.
Yeah, so there are 296 policies in our board policy book and they're divided into 11 categories. So right now we were on category G. And so this library one is in I, so you know, we kind of go, but, but there, you know, I think almost 50% of those policies deal with, for our students, for instruction, for conduct, and for services that we provide like busing and lunch and all those things. So there are quite a few and they do need to be reviewed and we are, we are working on them.
Mr. Chairman, if we, Mr. Chairman, Wes, if we had a question about that, do you want us to ask now or do you want us to wait till we're ready? Teresa, how many, and I had an update and maybe Dr. Schultz, how many are in process that have the incorrect form, or not incorrect form, but how many are existing form? How many are, is our committee working through? An approximate is fine.
I believe 13.
13, okay. So we've had 13.
13, I believe nine to 11 are in the appeal process.
Okay. Got it.
And, and honestly, that's part of why we have to, we need to pause and wait for the new, I need to respect the role of my current librarian and she needs to be able to get back to her job with the kids right now. And so while we do our part with the policy, we wanted to give her that time. Because as you can imagine, with one certified librarian, those, you know, those 13 have taken a significant amount of her time. And I, I need her to be able to settle back into her role. And so that's where I think we ask for your grace and your patience, that all new requests will wait to make sure that the policy is at the will of this board. And, and that's what we have asked our librarian to consider. So really the appeal process now will, will end up coming probably towards my office and not her. So, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move forward then on the school finance committee. Terry Johnson and I are on that, what?
Yeah, yeah. I don't think we met.
No, I'm saying that. We haven't, we haven't.
We don't know what's going on with finance.
We haven't met, but we, our last work was to get the budget in order for, that we approved in August. And we'll probably start looking at some of the details again of our capital outlay, budget and other budgets. I want to thank Brian Luters on the report this month. He has done a nice job of laying out the various budgets, the cash balance, fund balances that we had on June 30th. And, and therefore we've got some meetings coming up that we need to schedule on the finance side. Mental health and coalition?
We have not met in August and I think the next meeting should be next week, but I haven't gotten the notification yet from Nikki. So.
Okay. General board communications. I attended the groundbreaking, I guess ribbon cutting, I guess is for exit 130 several weeks ago. It was a nice event and I just want to state for the public knowledge that that exit and overpass is really, really important to the Brookings School system as people are using that to come across some, our district that's east of the interstate, Aurora. Our bus system is probably figuring out new routes and alternate routes to maximize the use of that interchange. So thank you, Mayor, for your good work on that and also accept the acknowledgement from the school of its importance. So, okay, with that, and any other board agenda?
I have a couple of comments. First of all, the first day of school, I attended middle school for their registration day and high school on the first day of school. And it was, the middle school, boy, things were just boom, boom, boom. Parents knew where to go, how to go. The, the process went quite well. And then the first day of school, I spent maybe an hour and a half where all the parents come with their student to go through their schedule. And it was just, it's exciting to have everyone, you know, it's a new slate, you're starting a new year. The excitement there, I really appreciated the school principals, Todd and Heather, allowing me to come in and be at that, those events. One other thing is I will be serving with the results-driven accountability group that Dr. Schultz has asked me to sit in on. We're actually going to be meeting Wednesday. This is a group that looks over the special ed programs and to make sure we're meeting accountability there. And the last thing I have is we should decide who will be our associated school board's delegate assembly person. That is on Friday, November 17th. So just something out there. I attended last year, I'd gladly go again, but if somebody else wants that experience, I... Fridays, November 17th.
And also then next week, the 19th or something, is the associated school board meeting in Madison in which there'll be an opportunity for general kind of pre-discussion of what's coming up legislative session. I plan on attending and any other board member, I think just coordinated through, through Amanda at the board office. So, okay. Anything else from the board members in terms of...
I was, yeah, I was at the Hillcrest on the first day of school and it was great. I was just going to mention after processing our workshop session last week, I don't know, whenever, not that long ago, it was just a really effective way to work as a board. And so I felt like we just got so much accomplished in that timeframe. And so thank you, Dr. Schultz and board leadership for that time. Thanks to the public for giving us a workshop time. I mean, there's only a couple of times a year where we're just able to sit around and really dig in and we did some really effective work. And so if we can continue that, Mr. Chairman, I like those, those workshop sessions, so.
And the only other comment I would make is because we have a large number of people here, we have received a very large number of emails and we appreciate that. And I have not responded to everyone and I don't think the board, that's probably true of all of us, we just have not had the time to respond to every email. I have read though, every email that I received and I just wanted to make everybody aware of that, that I do appreciate that and I read them carefully as we think about everything that we're doing to impact the Brookings School District.
I want to just add, maybe going forward for board communications, we want to add the transportation committee? Oh, Wes and I are on the transportation committee.
Let Nate know, he's excited.
I know he is. We're going to ride some buses together.
Noted.
Noted, all right.
Yeah, that work came out of our work session that we needed to add a transportation committee and so.
All right, I will move on to 7B, administrator reports. Dr. Schultz will give the superintendent's report.
Yes, and I know in, historically, the superintendent has read through the administrator reports. I apologize, but I'm not that superintendent anymore and so I will not be reading to you written reports. So if you are interested in reading the administrator reports, I encourage you, public and board members, that they are available for viewing. So that should speed up the administrative report section a lot. So I do, you do have to endure mine, just, but mine will be brief, I promise. The first was just to comment on our, our board retreat and that, that was a, there is a document that you can see that really streamlines some of the specific target strategies as a superintendent that I will be working on this year. The second point to note is that we have assigned three staff members to be our safety coordinators. One of the areas of our district that is just, we, we can't compensate on is, is school safety. And so we need to make sure that all school manuals and all school signage is up to date and using common language. That's one thing I found when I came. I'm not sure that the language is common across school district or school buildings. And so our three individuals will be, that will be their number one priority and they will work directly with our SROs and, and make sure that everyone is on board with that. And then we are, we are an Alice School District. However, you can't be an Alice School District if you're, if all of your staff is not trained and refreshed. So that needs to be another goal that we take care of right away this fall. And so those three individuals are going to help me out because I was afraid that if it stayed on my plate, it could, it could get paused a bit and, and that's just not an option when it comes to school safety. AI training, and we have an administrative staff, a team going to AI training in Sioux Falls, which is put on by our school districts, administrators of South Dakota Association AI. If you, if you don't know what artificial intelligence is and ChatGPT and you name it, you should. And I would bet our college kiddos in the front know it. And, and I think as, as school folks and, and whatnot, we're all trying to figure out how to use it. Because let's not kid ourselves, it is amazing and it saves time and it is, there is a lot of value to it. But we also understand that anytime you have something that can be that effective, then in the classroom, we have to figure out what that means and what our district will allow for the culture building and, and the sensitivity around AI. So we are taking a team to that. We have some communication updates. We have a new live, live feed and, and parent communication system. We're getting some bugs out with that. The one thing I want parents to know is that that system, every time I send a live feed message or an email every night, it will sync with Infinite Campus, which means if parents' information isn't updated or email addresses, phone numbers are wrong in Infinite Campus, you won't get the messages. So just, that's our first line of defense if, if something's not getting through. But I, I had a, I had a dad reach out today and say, well, the message went to, to one of us in the family and I really appreciate that because if there is something wrong, then we can dig into it. So parents, guardians, family members, anyone who's on that message, please let me know if you're not getting it. This is going to make me sound really out of date, but we are finally Facebook official at the Brookings School District. There has been an unofficial Facebook page floating around for years, which just means we don't have control over it. We don't really have a plan for updating it and it kind of has that feel of, you know, early 2000 website kind of thing. So we now are official, which means the district controls the, the Facebook page. It is not live yet, but it will go live in the next week. Don't dig too far because I just started it a week ago and I am not very good at, at making posts, but we will have individuals from the district who will be running that. Now, every school in the district still has their own Facebook page, trying to make all that, figure out how to make that work. But anything we post or send out in our live feed will go directly to that district Facebook page as well. So it's just one more way for us to communicate with our stakeholders. Every Sunday, our activities director, Jeff DeVorek, sends out a schedule with the upcoming activities that our high school kids are participating in. Because he was my activities director from the school I came with, I have learned over 11 years that that is what I use to schedule my week. He sends it out to Brookings staff and now I have, I will, I will kind of clean that up every Sunday or Monday morning and send that out on the live feed also. So if you're just wondering how to support our Bobcat activities, that one message and that one PDF that will get posted on Facebook would be a great place to start. Finally, my last thing, our Rotary Club here in town has sponsored, they wrote a grant, Kay Norton wrote a grant, I believe, two years ago for some Safe Talk training. And she's going to be bringing in a nationally known organization that's going to come work with our teachers on October 6th for recognizing some signs that could be associated with social emotional needs. And ultimately, we want to make sure, we know suicide is an issue in, in our, in our communities all over, you know, the nation. And so these individuals are going to help us with some of those warning signs, whether it be our own families, whether it be our peers that we work day to day with or our students. And so that will be on the 6th. So we are very thankful to Kay and the Brookings Rotary for that partnership.
Thank you, Dr. Schultz. Is there any questions or comments from the board members? Okay, we are, as Dr. Schultz mentioned, we're going to waive the 14 reports that are available.
14, you can thank me later. I'm just going to mention though, I, I do read all those reports and I appreciate them and it gives, you know, they're on the website, they're on this electronic school board website if you want to know what's going on in every school and every department. They, it's all there. And I do appreciate the administrators who take the time to write those up every month.
And it was really, these reports this month are really a nice window of what went on, is going on as the new school starts. So that's, I think, is worth mentioning, mentioning in common as a special thank you to those administrators who wrote those reports and, and we need to acknowledge that. So with that, we'll move on to the other communication discussion items. That'd be our policies. The policy committee of Dr. DeBates and Dr. Binkley will refer this now to you for any, any comments and explanations you have regarding...
Okay. These are all second readings, meaning that the board had an opportunity to look at the changes that were made in our policy committee and respond to us. And we did not receive any additional comments and so these are the final format.
They're the final formats. And that being said, Chairman, we could just go through them all. I don't think...
Well, we're going to...
Anybody has any questions? And then they're approved later in the meeting.
Go through them now if there's any questions. The informal environment is of value at this juncture.
So.
Staff conduct.
Yes, staff employee conduct. And we did get rid of one policy because there are two that were, there was one that was staff conduct and one that was staff responsibilities. They said almost the same thing, so we now condense that into one.
EBEB, is that where we're at?
Yep. And the communicable diseases and the guidelines for that is, we did meet with their school nurse, Jackie Nelson. We appreciated her help on getting these up to date. So there's nothing more to say on that one.
Okay, then GBGA?
Pretty, pretty straightforward with what ASPSD has suggested we have in that policy.
XGBGD?
Same, it's pretty much...
These have all been reviewed too by Association of School Boards, so we feel comfortable.
EGBGE?
Benefit eligibility. We did talk with Brian to make sure that we had that up to date and, and reflective of what our district has for employees to receive the benefits.
BBI?
And again, pretty standard language for gifts and solicitations.
I found a couple of grammar editorial things. I just referred those to Dr. Schultz to give to Amanda. So I don't think that's anything we have to worry about.
JJBA?
This is one that, as I mentioned earlier, was given notification last September, I believe, and we've had some different things. And even I think during legislative session, there were some things that came up and it got waited on then. And then we have a new activities director, so we did want to wait for Mr. DeVorek to get a look at it. And we found that we are going to approve this one at our second reading a year later and make sure, if he finds that there's something in there that is not working. And this is just for non-school sports. We have a bowling team, we have swimming. just for non-school sports. We have a bowling team. We have swimming, different things that are not South Dakota High School Activities Association that are in that policy.
And importance of that is they can wear the, the Bobcat name, the Bobcat logo, and call themselves Bobcats. There's a lot of value-
They can earn a letter.
Earn a letter. A lot of value to the individuals who participate. Okay, so now we're on to JJAB.
And this is the same for non-school academic clubs. I believe we have a chess club. I don't know all the other ones, but it, it's the same as the non-school sports, except for it's non-school kind of, whether it's a math club or a science club or something like that.
Thank you.
And then the, the two new notifications, which were not printed, but we gave the notifications earlier that we added to the agenda.
I just had a question on one of those, on the two new notifications too. If we, and can you remind me the first one that we added to the agenda? We had KLB, I remember because that's my initials for the library one.
It was for-
IA?
Complaints, public complaints about the curriculum or instructional materials.
Okay, so that's the form that's been being submitted right now.
No, that is that form that that policy says should be submitted in this case-
Is not there.
Is not existent.
Okay.
We have tracked it down, so we need to just-
Yeah.
Pull it in and have it there.
I was just going to ask the policy committee to check in too and I'll continue. I've looked at some other places. But if we have a parent form where parents can choose what books do we have to have a policy? And so I just would have, ask us to maybe look at that. And I know you maybe already did and have checked with legal, but if, if we're doing parental choice and parents can fill out a form, do we need to have our library and spending time reviewing books?
That is something that has been brought up and that we, we would see just how it could work.
Okay.
And so that is on the table.
And we have looked at, I have looked and I know Teresa has too, looked at policies from other school districts before, as we're trying to make this clearer.
Yep.
Policy committee has met three times on this-
You're working really hard.
Library materials. We've, and we've contacted a lot of people and I, I've read a lot of publications. I've looked through a lot of things. So-
Yeah.
We are diligently working on it.
Absolute. I know you are. I know you are.
Okay, then the next, excuse me, the next item is our consent agenda for the, our guests this evening. This is an area where in one motion, we approve those items, amendments of the meetings, bills, and other items that, that require board approval. And it will include the policies, second reading, that was just described by Dr. DeBates and Dr. Binkley. So with that, we will then move on to the consent agenda and having, and it would be a right to pull something from the consent agenda. There was none pulled today. So now the consent agenda as presented stands for approval. So-
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a second. Okay, with that, discussion, here are no discussion, we'll proceed. And for your edification, we vote electronically. So the motion comes up and you, yes, no, or abstain. So we have a unanimous vote and so the motion is passed. And so we have a consent agenda approval. Having none, I had no items pulled from the consent calendar, we can move on to action items that require individual action. First item is approval of donated items. Thank you to those that have, those three donations we got and that are accepted by the board if action is taken at this juncture.
I move to accept the, and approve the donated items.
Second.
Motion is second.
I'd mentioned that they were for the middle school band, Brookings High School Choir and Brookings High School Band. So, thank you.
Okay, we're ready for a vote. Motion prevailed. Next item is, we have the Brookings High School Learner Handbook for 2324 that requires board approval. I'll irritate a motion for approval.
I'm of approval of that.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion approved in second to approve the Learner Handbook. Any discussion or questions?
I just have a question. I noticed a lot of the changes in yellow were names and this and that. And then a lot of phone numbers at the high school were crossed out. Is that, I don't know why, but I just noticed that. I don't know if the phone system changed or they-
If you could just follow up.
Yeah, I can follow up too. I just-
The biggest change was the schedules. They had the old 22, 23 schedules in there. And then they did update the staff listing.
Okay.
Okay, so then we'll continue with a vote, having had a motion in second on the approval of the revisions to the high school learner handbook. A motion prevailed. And then we'll go on to another item of approval, and that is the purchase of 200 band uniforms, 10 drum major uniforms for Brookings High School in the amount of $135,854.50 to buy board contract vendor number 498. Take a motion of approval and then we'll ask Brian to comment.
I move to approve the purchase of the 200 band uniforms and 10 drum major uniforms for Brookings High School Band.
And I'll second that motion.
Motion is second. Brian, would you give us a brief update?
Just very brief update. The last time the district ordered band uniforms, they were ordered July 1, 2013. So it's been a little over 10 years. And the life of band uniforms is generally eight to 10 years. So it's time to replace them. And Mr. McMahon went through a process and reviewed several, excuse me, several prototypes with the students and staff and came up with the uniform. I apologize, we did plan on trying to get a picture of it. We just weren't able to get one. So what we'll do is when we get one, we'll just forward it to the board members.
No more comments, questions? We then can proceed to vote.
Mr. Chairman, can we have a two-minute recess before our comments from the audience?
Yeah, we can take off. Yeah, we're now concluded our business. And our next item will be comments in the audience. We're going to take a five-minute recess. So people can stretch and whatever else. And then we'll proceed in a timely manner to the comments This is the last item. We have about 25, 25, 27 individuals who asked to, to comment. And so I've asked Dr. Binkley to preside in this agenda item. And so again, thank you for your presence and the patience as we get into this item of agenda. Thank you.
As Chairman Cheddar asked me to do this, and he, there's a statement from the Associated School Boards that I'm going to read first. It will take a minute or two. "The Board welcomes public participation at board meetings. However, such meetings are intended for the consideration of matters of education policy and implementation and not for discussion of broad political or social issues. Although the Board welcomes comments about programs offered by the district and the efforts of its staff under state and federal privacy laws, comments relating to specific individuals or students is prohibited. The Board will entertain comments from the public on any issue with a time limit of three minutes per person. The Board aims to maintain respectful and appropriate environment during school board meetings and seeks to uphold the values of professionalism, decorum, and sensitivity in all discussions and presentations. Our school board meetings are broadcasted live and recorded and are accessible to the public. Citizens viewing our public board meetings are made up of individuals of all ages, including minor children, and reading aloud materials that may be considered obscene or offensive could have long-lasting implications. The Board recognizes the inherent difference between encountering obscene offensive material while reading as an individual and simply having the option to discontinue reading. And being read to and having to listen to obscene offensive material, there is a difference. And this responsibility of all participants to ensure that any materials read aloud during meetings are free from sexually explicit content, profanity, explicit language, or obscenities. As school board meetings are broadcast live, Federal Communications Commission regulations regarding on-air indecent speech may also be applicable. Any individual providing public comment on library materials that contain sexually explicit or obscene content of profanity has the option of, number one, reading the section aloud but skipping the obscene profane language or sexual content, or two, providing the board president a copy of the material the individual believes to be objectionable, which will be circulated to the other board members, or by emailing the material to the other board members. An individual who presents profane language, obscene, or sexually explicit material during a school board meeting will be reminded of the protocol by the presiding officer. And if the individual continues after a clear warning, the presiding officer may tell the individual that their opportunity to provide comment has ended for failure, failure to follow the protocol. I would just mention, all the children in school, we have a be a Bobcat. Be responsible, be respectful, be safe, and be an active learner. So I think tonight we can show the children that we can model the be a Bobcat bees. Okay, when the speaker comes, please come to the podium. On the mic, there's a button you push. When you see the green button is lit up, the mic will be on and ready to use. The first speaker, Berendine? Barondo, sorry. I didn't, you can please state your name. I didn't even attempt the first name.
Asha Agnopa Barondo. Takio Yasun. So this isn't the first time I've come to a school board meeting to visit about things that are happening in our Brookings community. And I guess I just wanted to focus briefly on one main point and two smaller ones. The smaller one being as a, somebody who's also been a journalist and a reporter, I would like to say that I definitely understand a lot of the people in the audience and at home, when things aren't fully read, what those policies are that many of us have come to talk about. I believe, it was interesting to me actually, when I ran for school board, who actually supported me, people that I do not agree with often politically, because I ran talking about parental choice, parental information. And this is a school district that it broke state law and guidelines by the Associated School Boards when they refused to let my Ogallala Lakota son wear an eagle feather during graduation. So you understand that the school district, and I, I recognize that those staff that made those choices are no longer here, but, and board members, some of them. But I would like to remind everyone that I think there is a serious situation in Brookings where parents feel like they are not being listened to. And I think some of the more radical and loud opinions that we are hearing is because of that underlying concern and conversation amongst various groups of people. So actually, that was both of them. That was the parental and the journalism side. My third point is praise Jesus. I am very tired of hearing from this desk, when I watch the school board meetings, of certain people thinking that they seem to own Jesus and have him chained and gagged and speak for him and they're the only ones that speak for him. I am tired of it. It has gone on in our public meetings here, the city, for far too long. it has gone on in our public meetings here, the city, for far too long. I may be a tribal member. I was born in Pine Ridge, a member of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe, a mochetti shaku and writer. Most of our books could well be, and writing's well be banned, and they are in some states. But do you want to know, one of the most banned books is the Holy Bible. And here's a little bit of a history lesson for those that don't know. The reason, one of the reasons, is it was never supposed to be printed in the common English language. Do we remember this? And somebody named Tyndale and all the martyrs who worked to get the, what is now considered the Bible, into the common language. And how many pastors in this town can speak fluent Latin and Greek? And if that hadn't happened in England, and, and we adopted it here, then we wouldn't even have that. And so what a lot of people are standing on, what a lot of people are standing on is a book that almost, that was not supposed to ever be published to begin with. And the Bible is literature, and you do have to think through it. And so I just want to thank everyone for this opportunity, and I believe most of the people behind me agree with a good chunk of that. Thank you.
That is time. Next on the list, we have Cole Sartell.
Good evening. I'm Cole Sartell of Brookings, president of Brookings Pride. It is very unfortunate that a small vocal group of people have decided to waste the time of this board and use these meetings as the battleground for their culture wars. However, since they were allowed to dole, on the record, dole out free hugs and hate speech, I would like to thank you on behalf of the many gathered here today for the opportunity to address the damage that has been done. As we've seen in this very room, there is an ongoing nationwide attempt to censor discussions about race and gender in the classroom. The disparaging remarks made at the last meeting about the middle school support group and Brookings Pride are a tactic towards that agenda. This year, we celebrated Pride on the tail end of a brutal legislative session addressing 530 anti-trans and anti-LGBTQ+ laws nationwide. In South Dakota, we defeated both of the anti-drag bills and the legislative swipes at books in classrooms. Out of the desperation of defeat, they have turned to bring their attacks to our school boards, which is not fair. Censoring books by and about people of color and the queer community is discriminatory and antithetical to our First Amendment rights. All young people deserve the right to read and learn about diverse histories, experiences, and viewpoints. The books on library shelves don't necessarily reflect the views of a district. They offer access to the entire spectrum of human knowledge, art, and ideas, a way to explore and to learn to think independently. Limiting the books available to growing minds shrinks their world and limits them. Including books that reflect the lived experiences of queer folks can help foster growth, greater academic success, and a sense of belonging. Every student should feel welcome in our schools, especially students at risk of marginalization. For kids who feel different or unloved, access to books that center stories like their own is vital to sound mental health. All of us should get to choose what books we read. No special interest group gets to choose for us. That is un-American and unconstitutional. A government that censors books is afraid of empowered communities. Books hold the power to stop fascism. Per ACLU South Dakota, Brookings has the highest percentage of queer folks per capita in the state. This community voted this board in because we have every confidence that you will stand for what is right, and for that, we thank you for all of your time today, and everything that you do for this community. So we do appreciate you all for everything that you do, and we trust you and have faith in you. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Doug Morano. I'm a Bram Stoker Award-winning editor and owner of Bad Hand Books, a publishing company I operate right here in the Brookings area. Our unofficial tagline is, "Books they want to ban, from people they want to outlaw." So when I heard that some individuals were organizing to try to get books banned in my community, it got my attention. I'm here to help Brookings set some expectations as this body reviews and develops the relevant policies. I come before you on behalf of my four children, Rocco, Eva, Luca, and Franny, who attend school in this district. Three of them are out there right now. The book I brought changed my life. Some of you are going to recognize the title, "It", by Stephen King. I read it during summer days when I was about the same age as Bill and the Losers Club, when they built their dam in the Barrens and later confronted Pennywise. Had the adults in my life understood the content inside, they surely would not have wanted me to read this book. It features scenes that depict the following: child abuse, dismemberment, racially motivated hate speech, our carnivorous circus clown, graphic spousal abuse. This list is not all-inclusive. None of that sticks with me as much as the lesson of the book's prologue, and that's why I brought it tonight. You see, the monster featured in "It," Pennywise, sleeps for 27 years at a time, and wakes up to sow hate and fear once a generation. It eats hate and fear. In the novel's prologue, the cycle begins when a young gay man, Adrian Mellon, becomes the victim of a hate crime at the hands of the people of Derry, and as a result, becomes the victim of Pennywise. Why do I mention this? It's because our Uncle Steve tried to tell us more than 30 years ago that the evil that slumbers in good, small communities, little towns with names like Derry, Maine, or Brookings, South Dakota, wakes up at some point in each generation, and the first sign of it is often violence and hatred toward our most vulnerable marginalized neighbors. It is a relevant lesson today. Despite what a number of those who are in attendance may insist, efforts to ban books do not protect our children. In fact, they're aimed at pushing marginalized individuals further out, to erase their stories, delegitimize their struggles, and make them easy to dehumanize. Physical violence comes a lot easier after that. I'll repeat, when segments of our communities are emboldened to silence or harm marginalized individuals, there's often something much more sinister lurking underneath, trying to find the right time to wake up. We're seeing it now. It animates one of the more modern political movements we're seeing, including efforts to ban books at schools like Dakota Prairie. We can put a stop to it, and help keep it at bay in the future by letting our kids read freely now, so they can learn important lessons like the one I've shared tonight. So, I'm here to say, as an honorary member of the Losers Club in the midst of generational confrontational confrontation, not on my watch, not in my community, my children deserve better. Every single child deserves better. I urge this body to reject calls to ban books. Hi, O. Silver.
Please, let's respect everybody's comments. I don't think we need to get a cheerleading squad going and things like that, so please, let's be respectful. Next speaker is Bob
Good evening, and I thank the Board for this opportunity to address a pressing issue. My wife and I have been members of this community since 1970. We've raised our children here, and all of our three children are graduates of the Brookings School System. During the latter part of the 1970s and into the 1980s, it was my honor to serve as president of the Brookings School Board on three different occasions. I appreciate what it is to approach and attempt to formulate a broad policy affecting our school district. And my understanding is that currently, you are looking at three different library policies for this district. And the three policies do not necessarily coincide, that there's some ambiguities and even some conflicts. So you have this, this task before you of formulating a new broad policy. And that necessarily invites some tension that is always before a school board when you deal with an issue of this sort. Ever since the emergence of free mandatory public education, there has been a tension between what the appropriate authority of the, the local school officials ought to be and is under law, and then what the place of parents ought to be with respect to the education of their children. We know that at the national level, and I suspect in large part that's why we're here tonight, is because it's something that's going on nationally rather than anything that's going on locally here in the Brookings School District. But nationally, a group titled Moms for Liberty have created a pledge that calls for you as public officials to respect transparency in your policymaking, which I think has always been a part of our history here in the Brookings School District, is indeed, to try to be as transparent as possible. There's also been a request that in policymaking, we allow for parental participation and parental involvement in the decision-making. And I think we have a history of doing just that. I don't think we violate that call at all. But the question is, to what degree do we allow parents, particularly parents that may even be outside the district, to dictate the making of policy within our district? And to what degree we allow a minority of parents within our own district to dictate the policy of our district? So I simply ask you, as you weigh these calls for transparency and parental involvement, you also consciously consider your place as representing the broader community in formulating and adopting a, a new library policy for the Brookings School District.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Mettler.
My name is Jennifer Mettler, and I have lived in Brookings for over 20 years. My oldest daughter just graduated last year from Brookings High School and is a freshman in college, and my younger daughter is currently a sophomore at Brookings High School. I understand that the school board is working on updating these library and book policies. I also understand that there is a group who is proposing the banning or removing of specific lists of books in our libraries, and that's probably why a lot of us are here today. I would like to make it clear that my family does not support any book bans or censorship in our libraries or our schools. As a parent, I do have a right to influence what my own children read, but I do not have a right to decide what everyone else's children read. Reading books on diverse topics from diverse authors helps students understand what it might be like to live in a different place, in a different time, in a different lifestyle. This representation teaches empathy, tolerance, and understanding. And these are qualities that I would hope our Brookings School District and our community embrace, not discourage. Further, banning books also deprives students of the opportunity to engage with controversial topics and develop their critical thinking skills. Restricting information discourages freedom of thought and undermines one of the primary functions of education, teaching students how to think for themselves. Censorship stifles this critical thinking and hinders students' understanding of important issues going on in the world around us. It also appears that many of the targeted books deal with marginalized groups in our society who are already marginalized, the LGBTQ+ community as one example. It's especially important for members of these groups to see themselves and their experiences represented in literature. Eliminating access to their stories can have a significant negative impact on students' mental health, which we already know we are dealing with on a large scale. So to echo Dr. Schultz's email, it is important to ensure that our libraries continue to be a place where students have voluntary access to a diverse range of literature and are a foundation of knowledge, understanding, and cultural enrichment. I would just ask that, as the school board, you please keep this open expression of ideas at the top of your minds as you do work on establishing the library and book policies in our district. So thank you very much for all of your time and your hard work.
My name is Diane Culver. I am a retired teacher. I am a graduate of a BHS in 1966. I have three children that graduated from Brookings, and there's a couple teachers back there that had those rowdy boys. I majored in English in SDSU, and my middle school endorsement from Madison. I also have an English History minor. I taught three banned books last year, and I didn't know it. My third and fourth grade kids were the teachers. I shudder to think that the discussions that we have would have been banned, and they would not have their questions answered. I learned so much from their discussions, and they shared things that maybe they wouldn't tell Mom and Dad, or somebody else. I would like to leave you with this. Never in the history of the world have the people banning books been the good guys. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sue Young.
I am a resident of Brookings for 22 years. My children have attended the Brookings Schools from kindergarten through grade 12 graduation. During those years, I've been a very involved parent, volunteer in the classroom, PTA committee chairs, represented Brookings at the state PTA level, et cetera. One thing I wanted to express is my belief that no teacher or librarian in this school district is trying to harm any child. It's basically the opposite of why they're in that profession. And I think we all want our children to become curious, positive, hardworking members of our community. And I think the policy that you have in place for a parent who objects to something and wishes their child not to read something seems completely reasonable. We, as parents, we know our children the best. Something that might upset one child may not upset another. However, I do have a big issue with banning all books for one child, for all children. I understand the world is different now from when we were at school. Things have changed a lot in a short period of time, and that's scary, and that's new. And I get that. I have a lot of empathy for that fear. But having raised two children to young adulthood, it's also a world that's going to be normal for those children. It's one that they're going to have to learn how to navigate. Reading about a character in a book that might have a different point of view, a different race, gender identity, sexual orientation, whatever the case may be, might be different from you or how you experience the world. And that's okay. That's a good thing. It's good for the child that sees themselves in that book, and it's also very good for the child who doesn't see themselves in that situation. Because that child will grow up and have a friend, a roommate, a coworker, an acquaintance, or a family member that might have that aspect. And maybe they'll just have a little bit more understanding for that when they read that story. So let's not forget, schools are not trying to harm our children. They want what's best for them, and just as we do. Thank you.
Carrie Ort. Oh, sorry. Larry, sorry.
Good evening. I'm the Reverend Larry Art, the Episcopal priest at St. Paul's Episcopal Church, where I have been the priest for approximately 10 years. I've been very active in our community, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak. Public schools and public libraries have long championed free speech and free inquiry. It appears many states and groups are now involved in a race to the bottom. Who can become the most conservative? Who can curtail the most freedoms? Who can curtail the most freedoms? Now, a group from the religious right is asking that you ban some 200 books from our libraries. They repeatedly tell us Jesus is the answer. I commend our board and librarians for the well-established policies with respect to age-appropriate materials which you already have in place. I find it interesting that the book I hold, the Bible, which I use every Sunday, also appears on the list of the Hundred Most Banned Books. The Bible covers every facet of life, from the very worst—rape, murder, genocide—to the very best—the coming of God's kingdom. We can learn a great deal by carefully studying the Bible and many other books people would have us ban. They invite us to consider our own prejudices. They confront us with some sordid aspects of our character and history. Religious zeal often leads to very un-Christ-like behavior. Zealots manifest an attitude which says, "Step aside, Jesus. We will take care of this." In so doing, they put themselves in God's rightful place. They idolize themselves and their actions. True Christians are Christ-like. They strive to imitate Christ in word and deed. With that in mind, the only institution which Jesus, a Jewish rabbi, attacked was the temple. Jesus did not employ political pressure to reform society. Jesus told compelling stories which invited people to embrace a new life and new values. Jesus practiced acceptance and invitation, not compulsion or coercion. As Christians, we are called, with God's help, first and foremost, to work on ourselves. We are called to transform our own life, not our neighbor's life. A careful study of the Gospels, especially the Sermon on the Mount, which many of these groups would dismiss, should convince us we have enough work on ourselves to last for a lifetime. We do not need to work on our neighbor. In closing, I again point to the Sermon on the Mount, to Jesus' words: "Not everyone who says to me, 'Lord, Lord,' will enter the kingdom of heaven, but only the one who does the will of my Father in heaven. On that day, many will say to me, 'Lord, Lord, did we not prophesy in your name and cast out demons in your name and do many mighty works in your name?'" Then I will declare to them, "I never knew you. Go away from me." I encourage you: Stand strong. Reject this effort at coercion. Thank you.
Mary Lanowski.
I've lived in Brookings for 16 years, and I have always appreciated how progressive this town is. And I applaud all of you for your time and your efforts and your study of this subject. I'm here because I understand there's a concerted effort to challenge or remove books from the school libraries, city libraries, libraries in general. I disagree with this. I've read books all my life on wide-ranging topics, some that I probably shouldn't have read when I was really young, that my parents had in the house, but I read them anyway, and they didn't scar me for life. I hope that I've expanded my knowledge, and these books have made me a better-informed I'm not here to advance any national foundations, ideas, or politicized agenda. I'm not here to be saved or be freed from anything. Both the American Library Association books are usually challenged with the best intentions: to protect others, usually children, from difficult or objectionable ideas or information. Reading a book helps students with their own life experiences—of theirs, their friends, their classmates, their families—which they may be going through, experiences of which their parents may not even be aware they're going through. Reading books can help students identify their own values, as they relate to either identifying or disagreeing with the books they read. I believe banning books impacts a student's ability to learn about themselves and others, and what the world is like outside of school and home, what they'll be dealing with in the real world when they grow up, and hopefully, hopefully, make them more tolerant of other people and respectful of other people. With all the hatefulness and divisiveness in our country right now, we can only hope they become more tolerant and respectful. Now, parents will try mightily to control the books their children read and protect them from objectionable material, and I've read the list of books that they want to challenge or ban. Most of them are for high school students. They should be reading books like that in high school. But children of all ages are always seeing and hearing things. That's how they learn. They will absorb what they can understand at their age, and many of it will go over their heads if they're not ready to learn what they're reading. I understand they're seeing a lot on TV, computers, and their cell phones. That's not going to change. Information is coming at them like a flood nowadays. Banning one book, 20 books, or 200 books is like plugging a hole in an overflowing dam. Again, thanks for all your efforts. I applaud you, and thanks for listening.
Becky Eklund.
I'm Becky Eklund, retired high school English teacher. I brought my copy of To Kill a Mockingbird, which I've read and taught for over 20 years, and I am so grateful that I had that opportunity, because this is one of the best-ever books, best book of the 20th century. Don't take a book like this away from our kids. I'm here tonight because I want to share a letter that Nancy Flynn wrote. I know you know how I feel, because I've already written to all of you. Nancy wrote this letter and asked me to share it, because she couldn't be here tonight. And then I also want to add some information about how books are selected for our school libraries. So I'm going to read just an excerpt from her letter. "This letter is to support you. I think our school district does a great job raising our children through the books that they study or are given the opportunity to read for pleasure. My four children are now between 30 and 40 years old. Because of challenging books and active classroom discussions, my now adults have seen some interesting parts of the world. They have been exposed to different belief systems, and they can express well-thought-out opinions without putting other people down. Nice job, teachers. Do continue to be there for the next inquisitive child that needs a safe place to explore values and thoughts and opinions. Do keep preparing our youth for the larger world that is beyond the borders of Brookings, South Dakota. It is important that public education stays open to all needs of all students. Keep hiring staff that follow school standards for choosing books, and staff that have the training and knowledge for creating age-appropriate conversations with classroom students. And again, I thank you for your gifts." From Nancy Flynn. We do have a staff that has the training and the knowledge to choose age-appropriate books. Our school librarian's job is to provide a library for all children. She's not building a personal library with a personal agenda. She cares deeply about all kids. And here I have to just say, this is a shame-on-Brookings moment, we have only one certified librarian. We should have a certified librarian in every building. We used to. So I asked her what her process is for selecting books. She puts a great deal of consideration into ordering books. When choosing a book for our library, she goes first to the Follett Destiny. That's a library manager used by more pre-K through 12 schools and districts to manage their library resources than any other platform. When she goes to the Follett Destiny and puts in a title, it gives five different age recommendations for the book. It tells about the awards that the book has received. It gives reviews of the book. It gives a description of the book. It shows books that are similar, shows curriculum connections. It shows if it meets our criteria, which is 2018, or newer publication, and two or more positive reviews. She belongs to the school library—she subscribes to the School Library Journal. She checks with other school libraries about books, and she checks with Amazon.
Three minutes, Becky.
Okay. This conversation about banning books shouldn't even be happening. I trust our librarian, and I trust our teachers. We have appropriate policy already in place for parents that they can use for their own children about concerns about a book. Thank you for your hard work, and thank you for your time.
Laura Burns.
My name is Laura Burns, and I'm an avid audiobook reader, and I am against banning books. History is meant to be taught so that we don't repeat the bad parts. It's history, I pointed out. I'm trying to impress upon my students that everyone has a history. Just because we're not always happy with what's true doesn't mean we shouldn't know it. It's how we learn. It's how we do better in our future. That is a quote from The Book of Lost Friends by Lisa Wingate, and her words are ones to ponder when we have these discussions. Banning books brings us back to a time in the early 19th century when banning—when we are banning things from visibility and discussion because it was deemed immoral, when in reality, what was being banned was the power of knowledge. There are many of us whose lives have been changed and continue to be changed and revolutionized by knowledge. Students should be able to read books; it's how their minds grow. They should be able to have these discussions about things that may be uncomfortable and subjects that may be uncomfortable with their parents, their peers, and their teachers. Real life is filled with experiences that are good and bad. We must learn from the unthinkable experiences and atrocities if we seek a path to hope and healing, embetment, and process. Taking away books doesn't prevent these experiences; it prevents us from learning from them. Books allow young readers to gain access to a diverse point of views from an ever-changing, interconnected world. Some examples of these would be an African-American nurse who must serve—who must care for a white supremacist patient, Jodi P. Colt, small, great things; a 13-year-old girl who was sold into sex slavery in India by her own family, sold by Patricia McCormick. The Day the World Came to Town is a book for this very day, about 9/11. It's about how a small town came together to help many others in a time of crisis. Reading about the terrorists within our borders and killing innocent people is hard, but what did we promise? We promised to never forget. That's history. It happened, whether it offends you or not. Quite a bit offends me, but there's nothing I can do about it. We must do our jobs as dedicated parents and trained educators to thoroughly navigate these ideas and events with our childrens. We do not need a small group of people to decide for us what knowledge and history our children should be learning. Please do not ban books. Thank you.
Judy Kroll.
I've never had to give a speech that's only been three minutes long, so I'll try not to speed through it. And I'm here as a former teacher as well, and I taught for the Brookings School System 32 years in the classroom, and then six more as assisting another person in the coaching of debate after I retired. It seemed like a piece of—oh, it was so nice, because all I had to do was work 40 hours a week, and it was like, I could have another job. Anyway, let's go. For me, as a teacher, of students who want students to question, investigate, discuss, argue, and grow their critical thinking skills, reading a variety of books, magazines, and researching online libraries is an absolute must if they want to discuss any current topic—ancient history, mental health topics, or anything else that might come up in the course of—the courses I taught. Our kids must be informed and have the right to have that opportunity. When limits are placed on the right to read, we are headed down a very dangerous path. In most countries, when rights of speech, press, petition, and other rights, you will find authoritarianism, dictatorships, and tyrants. And I could list, like, you know, the ones that are that way, like Russia, and North Korea, and China, who knows what else? Eliminating rights give the people no place to act. Information about history and mental health, current affairs, economics, and new technologies, and now artificial intelligence? And I doubt if all of you know what that is about, but it's a scary, scary thing, and I think we need to read. Children also need to feel safe. And you know, knowing and having knowledge about all those above things, and so much more, is essential to a thriving democratic nation. I look at many of the Arab states where they keep women from being educated, and they ban books and burn books, and we all watched what happened in Afghanistan when we left, and that's what they were doing. In the Western world, we had Germany back in World War II, and it's a classic example in the West. Banning and burning by the brown shirts, that's what started it. Took a long time to get to that fascist state, but they did it, and one of the first things they did was ban and burn books. Never happened here. All you have to do is look to Florida, and Texas, and Missouri. Sarah Huckabee in Arkansas, Abbott in Texas, who have progressed on from banning. History teachers not being allowed to teach the truth about our own history. And I think if I was teaching history or government, I'm sure I would be fired right now. I don't want to go over the top of this, but we need to stand up to these types of hits on our democracy before it's too late, and that is making sure that we all have access to reading what we choose, discussing current problems, writing books and essays and papers, with the freedom to inform, question, and critique. Let's find a way to work together, and without taking away anyone's right to sit down and read any book of their choice. Thank you.
Dr. Rachel Alexandria.
I'm Dr. Willan Charley. I'm an interdisciplinary applied organic chemist and glyco-cancer immunologist. I am a scientist and professor, and the views I'm going to express are of my own. The bottom line is that I do not support banning books, because it undermines intellectual and independent freedom and growth, and it stuns critical thinking, and that's really all I have to say.
My name is Riley Schwindler. I am a junior here at Brookings High School.
My name is Christina Messely, and I'm also a junior at Brookings High School.
Let's start off with, Marcus Cezaro stated, "A room without books is like a body without a soul." We are here today to talk about the importance of books and how they expand the knowledge of students. On May 10, 1933, 34 university towns across Germany burned over 25,000 books. The goal of this was to limit the knowledge of Jews and create a generation of closed-minded anti-Semitic people. Now and today, in 2023, it might not be as extreme as burning books, but the goals of limiting knowledge and limiting what people know are still the same. While that might not be limiting the knowledge about Jews, it is limiting the knowledge of other people's sexualities, and also the history of racism in this country. Limiting this knowledge that students have access can create a feeling of discouragement and also exclusion, as well as creating an uneducated group of individuals.
Next up, we would like to talk about the importance of free speech. Today, when I was talking with a friend figuring out what I was going to say tonight, we were reading the list of books that the Save Brookings Movement put on their website. I got to a specific book that had a lot of controversy. I got to a specific book that had a lot of controversy. I asked her, "Have you ever read this book?" And she said, "No, I have absolutely no intention of ever reading that book." And that sentence alone was enough proof to me that no matter the book, we as Americans have the right to free speech. And with that, we have the right to choose what we do and what we don't find appropriate enough to read for ourselves. My friend Riley here explained the importance of not banning books. She explained that in order to grow as a society, we need to have the ability to think for ourselves. We need to have the ability to not repeat the mistakes of the past. Banning books would not only be a suppression of our education, it would be a suppression of our rights. So counsel, today, as students, we ask you to look at the past to make the decisions for our future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aurelia Phallus.
Good evening, board. My name is Aurelia Phallus. I'm currently a junior at Brookings High School. And today, I want to emphasize the crucial importance of not limiting books containing racism and sexuality in our high school library. Our library is more than just a room filled with books. It is a gateway to knowledge, understanding, empathy and experience. Firstly, restricting these books would be a disservice to students. Education is about fostering critical thinking, empathy and open-mindedness. By providing a diverse range of literature, including racism and LGBTQ+, it empowers students to explore different perspectives, challenging their, challenging their own beliefs and develop into well-rounded individuals. Secondly, understanding racism and sexuality is an essential part of becoming responsible citizens. Books can be powerful tools for sparking conversations and creating awareness about these complex issues. Banning or limiting such books would hinder students' ability to engage in these crucial dialogues. Lastly, high school is a time for self-discovery and self-acceptance. Many students are grappling with questions about their own identity, including their sexual orientation and understanding of race. Books that explore these topics can provide solace, guidance and a sense of belonging to those who may be struggling with these issues. In conclusion, our high school library should remain a place where knowledge knows no bounds, where our students can explore diverse perspectives and where they can find resources to support their personal journeys. Let us champion to the free access to books about racism and sexuality as a way to foster understanding, empathy and growth in our school community. Thank you for listening.
Patty Bond. Oh, bacon. Maybe I should put my glasses on.
It's all right. As a former city council member, I understand what it's like to face a room full of folks on an issue of concern to the community. My name is Patty Bacon and I'm a citizen of Brookings whose children attended K-12 in the Brookings School System. They are both now successful individuals in their chosen fields. They had a strong foundation from their time in the Brookings School District. Thank you Kelly Rydel, former Brookings teacher, for articulating the issue of book banning so well in the Brookings Register. She stated, "Books are not the enemy, ignorance is." Learning about the world, having knowledge of past historical events, seeing the world through someone else's eyes increases empathy and understanding of others. If you are afraid that books might change someone's thinking, then you are not afraid of books, you are afraid of thinking. Kelly stated that John F. Kennedy said, "If this nation is to be wise as well as strong, if we are to achieve our destiny, then we need more new ideas for more wise men reading, more good books and more public libraries. We must know all the facts and hear all the alternatives and listen to all the criticisms. Let us welcome controversial books and controversial authors. For the Bill of Rights is the guardian of our security as well as our liberty. I'm imploring you as the school board to stay strong and stay the course. My children benefited from the amazing teachers of the Brookings School System, challenging them to read more books, discuss controversial issues and discuss all the alternatives. I want all future children to benefit as well. Thank you."
Erin Toller.
Oh, did I shut it off? Oh, sorry. Quite frankly, I don't have anything to say because I think everybody said it so well. I do want to say thank you to the board members. And I wanted to say, maybe it's just me, a former teacher and a mother of three who went through the district. Every parent and every person in this room wants to protect our children. And when society changes or things come up that are new to us, we want to wrap our kids in a bubble maybe and protect them. Unfortunately, we cannot protect our children from things that might be disturbing to us. We have to instead talk with our children, talk with our grandchildren and really come to an understanding. You know the old saying, ignorance is bliss? I hate to tell you, but it's not. It's through ignorance that hatred grows and dissension grows. It's through conversations that we can save our children and our grandchildren from whatever might challenge them and what they think or feel. I sat in an adult Sunday school class one time in my home church and I listened to a woman explain that she didn't know anyone who was gay. She'd never met anyone that was gay. Except I knew that her son was gay. Well, her son moved away and they were distanced for a long time. You know, I don't want that to happen to the kids in our town. And I don't want it to happen to their parents or their grandparents. Thank you.
Jeff Strui.
Hi, good evening, board members. I agree with probably 99% of all the speakers that have spoken. There's been a couple of segments that have come up. It's either banned books or it's age-appropriate. I would never fight for my country, as I did for four years, and fight for banning books. I've read so many books that were banned. Huck Finn, Tom Sawyer, to name a couple, when I was growing up. But we're not out to ban books. We just want to know that the profanity in some of these books listed and some of the sexual content in some of these books is so graphic and so extreme, I think we need to put an age-appropriateness on, on some of these. At least have a flag on them and not allow, let's say, a town like Madison where you have a junior high school and a high school that share the same library. So you have a difference of 12 years old to 18 years old. Now, can a 12-year-old check out a book in the same library as an 18-year-old? I think that's where Moms for Liberty is coming from. They're not out for banning books. I'm going to change topics a little bit. There's a, there's a thing that's, that's getting quite predominant in our nation. It's, and it's the difference between truth and lies. And we're moving away from critical race theory or CRT. And I'm hoping it will not be taught. We're, we're knowing that we are getting a new social studies curriculum coming in. I think it's next year. But I want to, I want to say that critical race theory is to teach that white males are inherently racist is so far beyond my comprehension. An example is, my best friend is from Ghana. He's West African. He's an ordained Baptist minister. He graduated from SDSU up here with a PhD in chemistry and he now teaches at Beloit College in Wisconsin. And I miss him. I also served with an engineering officer when I served on submarines. He became the first black commanding officer of a nuclear-powered submarine. He passed away not too many years ago and now he resides at Arlington National Cemetery. So for me to promote something like critical race theory is so far beyond me. I'm just thankful that we are getting this new curriculum in for social studies. I thank you very much.
Ben Bukovic.
I don't think, I don't think I'm going to say anything that hasn't already been said. I'd rather not become an echo chamber in here and contribute to that. I'm as much of a product of the Brookings School System as one can be, from preschool to SDSU, if you count that. Graduated from Brookings High School in 2017, SDSU in 2020. And now I'm pursuing a master's degree in English. And the reason for that largely is due to the experiences I had reading several of the books that are on the proposed ban list. I remember exactly where I was when I read certain passages of To Kill a Mockingbird and several others on the list. And the experiences that I had in my English courses in the Brookings School District made me who I am. And I'm happy that several of those English teachers are in this room. Mrs. Toller, hi. Hi, Mrs. Toller. Yeah. I won't take up my full three minutes. I don't need it. But let kids read what they want to read.
Do appreciate if you feel that you don't have new information to add to comments you've heard that for the sake of time that you, as Ben did, just say what you might need to say and then we can move on. Tyler Livermont. Daniel Spangler.
I prepared a brief statement here and I will try and cut it down if I can because I've, I've heard a lot of good things today. I'm simply here because I think that this issue is important and I care about the harm removing this material would do. As an educator, I've worked for several years, but I speak today as an individual. So these are my own opinions. So I speak as a citizen, a student and a CSA survivor. One of the narratives around trying to remove material relating to sex and sexuality is presented as a way to keep children safe. The suggestion is that sexual material or material that covers sexuality would increase the risk that students are put in dangerous situations. And much has been made of protecting children. And I think that's a good goal, but that it's often used to justify acts that can harm them. In fact, education on sex and sexuality is important to keeping children safe. And this includes conversations about consent. Children are often abused by people that they know and these children often lack the education language and resources to report this abuse. It's harmful for institutions to keep children ignorant of sex as this often leaves them open to abuse. Yeah. Social taboo is a shield for predators. Education, on the other hand, is a resource for survivors. Retaining these books is not only important for a full accounting of the world around students, it's also a means of keeping them safe. Thank you.
Molly Moore.
All right, howdy, what's up? I also don't have a lot to say because basically everything I wanted to say has been said already. But I just wanted to say that like, at the beginning of the program, your guys' mission statement was, "Our school districts should be confident and engaged in an ever-changing world." And I just don't see how we can do that while banning books. If you restrict children's access to information about the world, they will not be prepared to enter the world as adults. So that's all I've got to say.
Ruth Dickinson.
Thank you for this opportunity to address the board. I find that I spent most of my day doing research online about different organizations. After having read several newspaper articles online, I realized, well, this Save Brookings seems to have a point of view that perhaps needs investigating. So I looked through their list of books that they have identified within the libraries of the Brookings School System. And I was a little curious because there's a rating system on their list of books. And some of the books were books that I had read and thought were highly valuable. One you've already heard about tonight, To Kill a Mockingbird. To imagine going through an educational system without having exposure to that book is just phenomenal. But there were others as well. As a teenager, I saw a stage production of Tennessee Williams, The Glass Menagerie. It was very unsettling. But that doesn't mean it wasn't valuable. And another book I read as an adult, well, actually, there were many books on the list, but most of them I could understand why they were on the list. But I didn't think that that meant they should be banned or prohibited from anyone to read. But one of the books was on the list was one my children had read in middle school. And I, as a parent, would read the same books my sons would read because I wanted to know what was going in their heads in case we needed to talk about it later. And Al Capone Does My Shirts would be objectionable to somebody? Well, I thought about that further and recognized that the list had a link. So I went to Book Looks. The list is exceptionally long on Book Looks. It's even bigger than the list of books that you have in your library systems. And it's even more phenomenal to think that there would be people who find objection to the books on this list. As someone else has already mentioned here, that is an LLC funded by the group Moms for Liberty. But you keep digging deeper and you just get to feel a little bit more squirmy. Many of the reviews are funded by volunteers which align with the Heritage Fund, a very right-wing conservative group. Now Moms for Liberty is out of, at least the LLC, is out of Gravard, Florida. So in reflecting upon the connections today and thinking about my personal experiences, I couldn't see why would clear-headed individuals from the high plains of South Dakota ever be swayed by the opinions of someone from a different area who has apparently different value systems? When we think about what it is we should be guided by and recognizing the benefit of the school district having trained staff and accredited staff who we can trust to do the selections, we don't have to rely upon outside sources.
Christina Lind.
Hi. I'm Christina Lind. I'm from a farm just north of town and I have a child in the Brookings School District. And I'm here today as a concerned parent of the child in the Brookings School District. And I'm here today as a concerned parent of the child in the Brookings School District. Really uncomfortable to be in front of people, and especially on a topic of strong disagreement and confrontment. But I don't like to argue, or I don't know, my parents might disagree, I guess, and my partner, but it appears that it's time to change that, because the time to speak to now is now. I think many here already said it much better already, so I'm trying to skim or go fast. But I wrote this, so I'm going to go for it or I'll kick myself. And I'm facing my own discomfort, because I'm watching what I never expected to happen in my town, my state, or my country to ever be a possibility. History has seen this censorship before, and it wasn't in circumstances that I ever desired to have my family in. And history is the precise reason that this should not and cannot happen again. It's the precise reason that banning books or limiting access to is incomprehensible in a culture that values learning from our mistakes. Reflecting on past experiences or others' experiences to improve ourselves and our future and become wise in our choices. And even if it's not an outright ban, it's a slippery slope of censorship and suppression. There is value in diverse thinking without shame, to love others or even to learn to love ourselves. The history and reflection found in books is not about shame or guilt. Feeling uncomfortable about hearing others' truths or maybe even our own is not something to hide from. It makes us better people, wiser, know ourselves better, and maybe even feel okay about ourselves, a better part of our community, with more empathy and informed decisions. History and written words are about reflection, evaluation, and discernment. Our children should not suffer the loss of access to these histories, these other thoughts. And we cannot hide our children or ourselves from this world of a diverse thought that brings beauty and balance to our world, because these differences will still exist, maybe in views we don't agree with, things we fear or cannot control or don't understand, or even what we might consider explicit or sexual topics. But what we will someday lose as parents are those opportunities to talk to our children about them. They're exposed to these things, often younger than we may wish, and it may be uncomfortable and scary for us sometimes, but what we do control is the message that they hear from us, from their very foundation. And we all, as parents, desire to protect them, but we don't do that by suppression and control. We do that by teaching them to take a closer look at our fears, our discomforts, their humanity, things we or they don't understand, to watch, listen, evaluate, reflect, and learn from those things. To value thoughts and opinions other from our own and to pay attention to how these things make us feel and observe how others feel about them too. Books are learning and education, building intuition, empathy, understanding, and wisdom. Do we ignore when our children do something hurtful or harmful, for example, or do we talk about it? We know that doing these things do not inherently make them bad, that those things are separate from who they are as a person, so we face it and talk to them about those things so that they know that too, and we learn from them instead. Was that three?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness, okay.
Can I conclude, please?
I'll conclude, that we all just have freedom of thoughts and expression, and we don't limit others' access to these books just because they're not the same of our own. And that story is an indispensable aspect of history telling, and it's made me a better person. And ultimately, control like this stems from fear, and fear does not define us, fear does not bring us together. It doesn't build community, it builds anger and division and hatred, and that is not who we are, and that is not Brookings. Thank you, guys.
Rick Webley?
I'm not saying it. Hello, my name is Rick Webley. I'm one of the members of Save Brookings, so thank you. I want to say thank you to the members here in the audience, thank you to the school district, and thank you to the community at large. Mission accomplished. What's amazing is that so many people misinterpreted the goals of the website. Number one, it was to bring awareness. Just like other speakers have said, I agree with 99% of what was said here. The biggest thing, though, is, number one, are the books age-appropriate for the various levels? We brought awareness to that. What I will say is, good job, school. Most of the books are age-appropriate, but there's a few that maybe we can talk about. Maybe some should be expanded to some of the lower levels. Maybe some should be brought more to the high school level. Some of the great discussion here of our teachers here is the professionalism. They recognize that some of the books should have proper guidance. So like, for example, To Kill a Mockingbird, I too am grateful to read that book, but with the proper guidance and understanding of a professional that understood that there's an impact when you read that book and that you need to talk about it openly. And how racism, as a Hispanic, it's important that my fellow students understood what racism was like when I was growing up. That's important. We also have to look at other books, because our society is changing. There are guide rails in so many layers of society that we can't excuse that other side and ignore it. We have rating systems for TVs, movies, games, even adult magazines. We're not saying, let's bring in Penthouse, Playboy, and all of these other magazines, that's equivalent to books, we don't allow those in. But there are some of these books that are coming in that we're starting to see an edging where it's not quite age-appropriate, and we need to look at the pictures that are there and some of the content. And we need to make sure that when we're bringing in books, we need to make sure that we're reviewing the materials and promoting that embrace the mission statement of this school district, to be confident, engaging citizens empowered to impact the ever-changing and interconnected world. Critical thinking, absolutely. Teamwork, self-reliance, self-respect, respect for others, discovery of opportunities, being respectful, tolerance. All of that is so important, and so we want to make sure that we have materials that challenge that, build that, because what this world is going through, ChatGPT, as you so eloquently pointed out, that is a thing. Is that appropriate for K through six? Probably not, because we shouldn't just basically give them a calculator to basically figure out without actually using their brains. So thank you again.
Jeanette Gibbons?
Good evening, and I too appreciate the chance to talk to you again this evening. I've listened to all of the previous speakers, and it's great to hear this dialogue. The way that we solve problems is that we bring our ideas and our voices to the table. No one should be silenced. We should be free to express our views. Now, where I stand on the books, I do not agree with the comments that have been made about banning books in our school, these 200 books that we don't want in our schools. That's not a fair statement. The rating system, we could look at the rating system that has been used on the BookLooks.org, or maybe we develop our own rating system for books. I do think we all share the common goal of protecting children. So with some of the books, you know, I was listening to your comments before we started saying, you know, be sure you don't violate any FCC rules, because this is a broadcast event. And so that has occurred in a previous meeting, where words were read from one of the books in question. So if we're going to protect our audience online from offensive material that the FCC, where we would get in trouble, is that the kind of book we want in our school? Are the books that have how-to instructions for some of the various sexual inclinations? I chose myself to look at some of the books, and then when I got to a certain part, no, I did not care to read explicit instructions on how to carry out certain acts. And I don't think that's what we want for our children in school. Yes, our children need to be aware of the type of world that we're in, we should be open to, and be able to accept people that have different ideas, different lifestyles. We need to be able to talk. We need to be able to work through problems together. Now, also, I was very interested in the comments that were made about censorship and freedom of speech. Boy, if you didn't hear me scream about censorship and freedom of speech over the last three years, I was at any opportunity with public meetings to talk about that. COVID was the primary example of censorship and freedom of speech being shut down. So where were all the voices clamoring to say, "That's not right"? Instead, we all kind of drove down this path that led us to places maybe that we wish we hadn't gone now. I appreciate the school board's work on this topic. I appreciate the Brookings School District. I have three children that are products of this school system, and they too have gone on to lead very successful lives, and their education was a very important part of it. I also was a very involved parent. I think it's important to keep the parents in the loop, and my recommendation would be, rather than an opt-out process for parents, make it an opt-in process. If there's a book that seems like it's controversial, let's ask the parents, do they want them to? So it's similar to what we did with videos when my children were in school. If there was a video that was going to be showed and discussed, the parents were asked, "Is this okay?" So we had to opt in. All right, thank you for your time.
Diana Page?
Well, Diana Page, you guys know how to draw a party. I touched on this a little bit last week. In the United States versus American Library Association, 539 U.S., 194, 2003, the Supreme Court upheld the constitutionality of the Federal Children's Internet Protection Act, called CIPA, in a six-to-three vote, finding that the act does not violate a library patron's First Amendment rights, the Children's Internet Protection Act. CIPA requires libraries as a condition for receiving federal funding to install filtering technology on all their internet-enabled computers. The filters must prevent access to visual depictions of obscenity and child pornography for computers that are accessible to minors, and visual depictions that are harmful to minors must also be filtered. The law contained a disabling provision that permitted libraries to disable the filters on the request of an adult who sought such disabling for bona fide research or other lawful purpose. The American Library Association, the American Civil Liberties Union, and a variety of other parties challenged this law on its face, making two principal arguments, that it forced public libraries to violate the First Amendment rights of the patrons and web publishers, and the unconstitutional conditions doctrine, the principle that the government may not deny a benefit to a person on the basis that infringes his constitutionality, protect a freedom of speech even if he has no entitlement to that benefit. CIPA was amended in 2011 to include social media websites. It remains as a legislative measure that protects children when using the internet at the library or in school. So I ask, are these same filters applied to school library materials that are accessible to minors? Thank you.
Susan Strui?
Wow, I'm going a different course here. From the standpoint of founding fathers, the original intent was for schools to be founded and funded by local communities. The first laws on education were passed in the 1640s in the Massachusetts Bay Colony, where pilgrims lived. The laws required that the parents saw to it their children knew how to read the Bible and were able to understand the laws of the land. It was clear that the parents were the ones who oversaw the education of their children. And most early settler schools used a Bible-based education, held high moral standards for the students, and stressed hard work and academics. The original system intended by our forefathers holds a glimmer of hope, but can be revived. Now, education takes a drastic turn in America from its original intent. On this note, on April 26, 2017, President Donald Trump signed an executive order to begin the process of returning school control to state and local officials. This is a major step in returning the schools to the original intent of our founding fathers. Today mirrors only deception and evil. It can be turned around if you are willing, and that is the state fall under life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We have become intercessors to rise up and pray for American schools. We press through, we do not give up, we are not weary, we are not faithless. We are strong in our faith, and we do not back down. We boldly declare that America's students are free to pray and learn of Jesus. We decree education in America returns to its absolute source, where students are instructed in the Word of God and share the love throughout the nation. We decree that this is the month to watch our words. We watch our mouths, and we speak only the best the Lord has for American education. We declare shells of deception are broken off American schools. Education in America will go to a new redemptive level. And we decree, and we thank the Lord for this, for our forefathers, who experienced firsthand Your glory and come to America to establish one nation under God with liberty and justice for all. We proclaim their words will ring throughout the land. We are one nation under God with liberty and justice for all. And a reminder that the South Dakota State motto is, "Under God, the people rule." Thank you.
Marshall Smith?
Good evening. My name is Marshall Smith. I just moved here with my five-year-old son, and I'm planning on starting a life here in Brookings. Today, I stand before you to advocate passionately against the banning of books. I'm going to condense my speech for the sake of time and since most everybody has already said what I want to say. The freedom to read and access a diverse range of ideas and perspectives is a fundamental right that lies at the heart of our democratic society. Censoring books not only undermines this cherished principle, but also poses a threat to intellectual growth, critical thinking, and the very essence of our cultural and intellectual heritage. In the words of the great American author Mark Twain, censorship is telling a man he can't have a steak just because a baby can't chew it. Banning books, or censoring books, assumes that readers are unable to make choices for themselves, as if they were small toddlers who needed constant guidance. We must have faith in the intelligence and discernment of our citizens, both young and old, and trust them to make their own decisions about what they need. So, in conclusion, censoring books is a grave threat to our freedom, our intellectual growth, and our cultural heritage, as I previously said. Instead of censoring ideas, let us encourage open dialogue, as we have been doing, critical thinking, and the free exchange of diverse perspectives. Let us trust in the intelligence of our citizens and their ability to make informed choices about what they read. As guardians of liberty and champions of knowledge, we must stand together to protect the right to read and ensure that it remains a beacon of enlightenment in our society. Thank you, board members.
Diane Nagy?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you a statement from the Brookings Human Rights Commission. This statement has also been endorsed by the Brookings Interfaith Council. In light of recent events, the Brookings Human Rights Commission would like to stress the importance of intellectual freedom in our community. The Universal Declaration of Human Rights identifies freedom of expression as a fundamental right that includes the ability to seek, receive, and impart information and ideas through any media. The public's right to know is enshrined in the history and core values of the First Amendment of our Constitution and is essential to our democracy. Knowledge is power, the power to spread new ideas, promote social awareness and critical thinking, and produce thoughtful, creative, and well-informed citizens. Enlightened judgment emerges from considering varied sources and opposing views. Limiting access to narratives that give voice to underrepresented groups, depict historic injustices, and promote gender equity constrains our growth and reverses progress. The Human Rights Commission was established by city ordinance to improve human relations and civil rights in the Brookings area by fighting discrimination and to foster good relationships. and to foster goodwill, cooperation, and conciliation. The availability of age-appropriate books representing different perspectives is essential for our children to develop empathy, open-mindedness, and critical thinking. These are capabilities essential to eliminating discrimination and fostering goodwill among people with divergent views and enabling the continued prosperity of our community. We urge you to consider the impact the suppression of intellectual freedom could have on Brookings and to take a stand against censorship. Thank you for your time and for your continued service to our schools and our community.
Rena Reynolds?
Members of the school board, I'm Rena Reynolds. I am here on my own behalf, not speaking on behalf of any other groups. But I want to, number one, support and appreciate the work of the board and your public service and the integrity of our school district. I want to thank you for your commitment to our children, their learning experiences, and those who serve them. My sons, who are now in college and graduate school, both enjoyed success and support in our school district, and between the two of them attended all of the schools in this district. Maybe retired many teachers, except this school. So glad to be here tonight. You know, we teach our children in our homes and at school. The bullying is unacceptable. Unfortunately, in the past couple of years, our school district has been victimized and targeted by a small but active group of adults engaged in tactics that strongly resemble bullying behaviors. Some are less overt than others. Some are simply persistent and domineering. Like many others, I believe that parents must be engaged and active in their children's education. I read all the series that my young children brought home. Many of them, when they were teenagers, represented that teenagers had to save our post-apocalyptic planet after adults ruined it for them. And we have to make sure that those don't actually come out of the fictional world into reality. And while I may not, though I might for some, look like a marginal group or marginalized group in our community of learners, I was a young Jewish child growing up in Montana. And I'll tell you that growing up as a young Jewish child without electricity or indoor plumbing in rural northwestern Montana, it wasn't actually the use of an outhouse or studying calculus by kerosene lantern that marginalized me. Many of my mornings waiting for the school bus were actually interrupted by my neighbor, Mr. Durtin, who moved there from South Dakota. Now, Mr. Durtin showed up wearing an SS uniform and would say that to this young eight-year-old that I and all of my family members should be brought out on the trains that went down below our house and hunted like the dogs that we were. I'm not 90. This was not a long time ago. And actually, many nights, I would ride my horse, whiskey, to Mr. Durtin's house to help his daughter Julie pass math. And his house was full of white, angry men. He regularly had these meetings. And in this little town of Knox in Montana, the militia of Montana was born. It was at the center of white supremacy and white nationalism. White nationalism is enjoying a resurgence in our country. This group was actually behind the groups at Ruby Ridge and behind the Oklahoma City bombing plan. Believe it or not, the ID that was used by Timothy McVeigh was a South Dakota driver's license. These are serious and scary times. My former neighbor, Henry Durtin, was a bully. Today, he's buried in Platt, South Dakota.
Three minutes.
His memory is not, but there are more like him. And our schools are full of marginalized children. And I encourage you to keep your good work, represent our community, and do the hard work that represents all of our children. We're relying on you, and we're here to help you. But we do need to know when you need our help. I think you've seen that we're showing up to help you out. So thank you.
Charles Woodard?
Folks, my friends who know me to be somewhat loquacious will be pleased to hear that everything that I intended to say has been said a number of times. I'm pleasantly surprised by how this has gone. I expected it to be contentious. As far as I can tell, everyone is speaking reasonably and all on board to continue to address as school and community. I will speak just very briefly from my own experience as a parent, raised three children here and now a grandchild. And I've been very invested in their studies. My grandson even more, since I've been retired for most of his school years. And I have yet to find a teacher who I didn't think of as a very dedicated and committed and well-informed professional. Always eagerly responsive to anything I had to ask or suggest, always available. Really have a stellar group of educators in this community. And I hope we know how good we have it, having them as committed as they are in a world which is increasingly difficult to be a teacher, that they want to teach. Well. My wife, in fact, chastises me a little bit when we do these open house visitations for what she calls my interrogations. And that's just me wanting to know and me understanding that these teachers are happy to be asked. Though I'm appreciative of them and of our schools and of what I've heard here tonight, it's heartened me because, quite frankly, beyond our community and our systems, I've become, at this point in my life, pretty concerned about the future of our country. I think in the last several years, there's been a significant erosion of trust in our American institutions. And that worries me. One of our fundamental American institutions, of course, public education. So I'm very encouraged by what I've heard here tonight and hopeful that, hopeful that, well, I went beyond what I was supposed to do anyway. Hopefully, that we can be a model for other communities. I think we can, so thank you.
Laura Woodard?
First of all, thank you for having us here and allowing us all to speak. My name is Laura Woodard, and I graduated in the Brookings High School K-12 system. And I'm an SDSU graduate. And I've lived different places around the world. And I will say, I've always been confident about what I taught or what I was taught. I started a company called Vivian's Voice, and it is a communications consultant company that helps women in business of all ages, of all demographics, of all leadership positions, and young girls find their voice. I'm sure all of our educators here know, including the school board, that little girls stop raising their hands middle school and sometimes sooner. And the reason I know that is because I was fortunate enough to grow up with my, grow up visiting, rather, my mother's mother, Vivian, in the South, who was ahead of her time. Validatorian of her high school, raised five girls, and a retired educator. And every time I visited her, she would say, it's from the time I was about six, she would say, "Laura, are you raising your hand in class?" "Of course, of course, you're full of spirit at six and seven." And in middle school, I didn't want to lie to her, so I started saying, so I got back to middle school, and I asked some of my most beloved teachers, and they introduced me to Beverly Cleary, Judy Blume, gets me choked up thinking about it, both of whom constantly make the banned book list. And I think that's so important to have those authors and their voices available because not everyone has a Vivian in their life. And those books send messages to young girls, which then parlay's into their professional life later, that they do have a voice. They can see that in the characters of Ramona Quimby. I could go on and on about all those favorites. So I just wanted everyone to think about that component, too. Thank you. Two minutes.
We are out of names. I just want to say, I think on behalf of the board, thank you for coming. Thank you for being respectful and responsible and safe and being active learners. We appreciate all of you taking the time to come. It's almost 8 o'clock, so you've been here a while. You know how we feel now every month when we come. But thank you, and I'll turn it back over to our chairman.
Well, thank you. Thank you for residing on this. For the record, we had 32 persons who spoke over about 90 minutes. And there's no further item on the board agenda. So at 7:58, I'll declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.